This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching, please smash the like button and leave a comment, it really helps the rhythm. Haven't already, please subscribe to the channel. My call is being ordered, please stand up for Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please.
Ister, Savage?
Here.
Roche?
Here.
Barnhart?
Here.
Martina?
Here.
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Alright. I make the motion for approval of minutes and reports. Minutes from November 11th and 25th meetings and reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parks and records, and planning commission. Do I have a second?
Um, Ister, Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Alright, moving on, I know we spoke before, I know everybody was here last time about city administrator update. Derek, I don't know if you have one for tonight, if not, we can start getting the roll of things starting in the new year.
Yeah, just give me a second, I'll make it briefly. Um, been working on quite a few grants as far as administration and research that, you know, I can talk a little bit later, but overall, just in general, um, it would help a lot of businesses and bring in some funding for the businesses as far as existing and then infrastructure to help them out. Um, a couple of conferences to talk about, uh, investment and what needs to be done to bring in those types of investments into our community. Um, one of the big things that we are currently working on that they talked about is infrastructure, um, to entice those businesses to come in and also tax incentives such as Florida which we have. Um, and then also partnering like we have currently for the self-tech site which is the RAPD. So, a lot of the things that they talked about, we're already doing. Um, and then one of the bigger things I want to highlight is working with DDP and CEDOCAG. Um, we're going through, actually, um, I won't say all of it, but majority of our buildings in Sunbury, creating a list of properties that may have environmental issues. Um, so it's an environmental survey, um, and that will open up some other funding as far as remediation and also rehab for those buildings, so it's kind of the first step in a long line of things that you come. But, um, just had that update, so I'll keep that brief.
Alright, thank you sir. Uh, Councilman Barnhart, code office update, co-enforcement update, I'm sorry.
Officer Knight, would you like to?
Since our last meeting, we had two new inspections, both of which passed. Two re-inspections, one passed, one failed, and eight citations issued.
Anything else to add, Councilman Barnhart?
I just been getting, all the code officers meeting with that and back saying, "You're a jobbing." I'm just, I'm just gonna be in those.
Yes, alright, thank you Councilman Barnhart. Uh, moving on to old business, uh, so, before we go here, vote here, saying we're disapproving the 2025 budget once again here for the no tax increase here for 2025, any comments on that anyone? Alright, so I make the motion to accept the 2025 budget, do I have a second?
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Alright, uh, thank you. Okay, and then, uh, I should have added this too, I'll just make it in. Alright, so here also major is the tax rate millage report that we have to vote upon also. I didn't realize that was behind there, so, um, and with Keystone Collection being the 2025 link with tax collector, so I'll make the motion for the, uh, 2025 millage rate, millage report and tax rate, do I have a second?
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Savage? Yes.
Uh, moving on to city model re, uh, city hall remodel, I know Councilman Ister, last week we met with opening the bids? So, I don't know if you want to speak about that shortly about that, or what took place basically?
Uh, we opened up the bids and, uh, kept going about the general contractor and the company up there second and, excuse me, the other contractor got the electrical, what's the toll number, 180? Toll number? 184,000 dollars. Is the toll, two to two, I recommend you make a motion, I'll make a motion to continue the architect to, uh, order these two contracts.
Second.
Sir, um, may I ask, so with the electrical work, reviewing the proposals, what all is included in the 184,000 dollars?
The electrical is all the wiring on the first floor, including the panel box and the system locations, changing them, and then also, uh, the three offices of all safety glass, the counters and so forth, that's what's included.
So, counters and safety glass?
So, electrical works like for first floor? Yes.
So, the larger chunk, so with the drywall, so that's like the counters, the glass, are we doing any walls, like remediation like that? Or just the counter, the safety measures, like we're hitting just the safety measures with this?
These doors are all, all safety glass and the counters, that's, uh, all three offices and of course, uh, there's some others, so it's more important to be done because steel doesn't be dropped, your appliance is always to be replaced, there will be some drywall work and other stuff to move because of that, yeah, including the panels and so forth.
We're finding the money in the general fund or we're finding it in debt service?
We have.
So, I talked to treasurer troop about that, so, councilor, correct me if I'm wrong, right now we do have a line of credit out at a very good interest rate, I believe through Norrie National Bank, and we are going to just take it from that line of credit and with the money that we already have, uh, use it to pay back that line of credit and also, as we know, we have, do have the debt service tax to pay the difference. So, we have the mon, so for example, though, with the fund of 184,000, we'll be taking out the line of credit. So, but with the money we already have set aside, we're going to use, use that to pay the majority off of that line of credit we take out and then use the remaining through the debt service.
We have the money allocated from the?
We have the money allocated from ARPA funds, we have the money allocated from Zito, and we did, and we have the money allocated from the sale of the, the Peter Rock, that took place like two or three years ago. No, we did, we designated that for the camera system. But we already, you know, we've already voted to use those funds for, remember how we talked about putting cameras at third, fourth, and fifth? Yeah, so whatever money that is remaining, we can see what is remaining and put that money back. So, any other questions, anyone?
What is that line of credit for?
That was on the PD building from three years ago, or three years ago, wherever it was.
Okay, so we're not affecting the debt service tax, we're just going into an existing line of credit that's, that we're gonna just increasing us?
Correct, yes.
For the shortfall.
But yes, correct, for the shortfall. So, he make, Councilman Ister make the motion, I'll second it.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Savage? Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Barnhart to take.
Well, the next two ordinances, I like to table them, uh, have a public meeting again on January 13th, 5 o'clock to discuss it.
No. Okay, that's my question, alright, so I will second your table.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Savage? Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, point of order here with that, uh, tabling them for the, uh, January 13th public meeting, I would invite all business owners that have skill machines or owners of the skill machines to attend to that because their input will be greatly appreciated, so.
Thank you sir. Alright, on the next one, making see property ordinance, table, other do you table?
I want to table both of them for the same reason.
Oh, okay, did he, did yours? He did, okay, alright, uh, Councilwoman Martina?
I would just, we, we can get to go into discussion, we pretty much have this all finalized, everybody should have gotten all the new copies, so I just want to make a motion to approve the contract for the city administrator. Unless anybody has any other questions they need to ask.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
No.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Sorry. Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to new business, uh, the request to apply for Charlie P. Diggins Foundation for 2025 stewardess program, Council, I mean, Mr. Barnhart, would you like to speak about that, or? I mean, excuse me, Mr. Backer, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yes, um, Kurt Karlovich has been running this for a couple of years now, actually three. Um, so this is a renewing grant application, uh, he does some stewardess programs in, in series with some of the local individuals and, and, uh, Boy Scouts, um, so it would be in the amount of $3,000 and have been done in the past, so just looking for a vote affirmative to go for this again.
Alright, I'll make the motion to, so the city applies for the grant, do I have a second?
Ister? Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Savage, vouchers and abstracts.
I will make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of 188,524.77 private grants in the amount of 297,155.77 and payable in the amount of 71,096.77.
Second.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Uh, moving on to discussion topics, Mr. Backer, go ahead down to the roll of yours.
Okay, so, um, creation of the local facade grant, uh, Jody mentioned and talked about some facade opportunities, whether it be from the state or creation at the local level. Um, so I just wanted to, everybody to be aware that, and kind of expand on that a little bit. Create, creation at a local level can kind of allow us to create a little bit of city there. Of course, we have to find some funding opportunities, I know, uh, Councilman Barnhart talked about one, um, but, you know, we could mimic and really control what we want individuals to, uh, apply for and then also criteria as to what for eligibility to apply. Um, at the state level, uh, recently they have expanded it, instead of $5,000 that they would give out, it's $10,000. Um, it hasn't hit paperwork yet, but I was told that they are abandoning that with the governor.
Is that a match?
Uh, yes, it is, uh, it is a 50-50 match, so if you get the full 10, you have to put another 10 in.
When do those open, because a lot of times, we wait till the last minute to say, "Hey, businesses, there's $10,000 out there, but you have two weeks, get me all the paperwork." So, when does that, when does that state one open up, so we can say to the businesses, hey, on, for example, August 1st, the facade grant opens, you have until October 1st to get your paperwork in. And we know when that happens, because like Schmoken has gotten a couple in the last couple of years, Seale and Rover have gotten some, but we haven't gotten any in Sunbury, so when do they open?
So, um, I'd have to double check the opening date, but it's around, it, it concludes in late summer.
Like the opening date?
No, like you have to, the application has to be in.
Okay, so, but when does it open?
I have to double check the opening date, um, but it is summer.
Okay, okay.
Opening closes July till August 2nd-ish.
Okay, I'm just saying, because we have to know the exact date, so we say we can put it out there to the businesses, get people out there saying, "Hey, you know, go out there, apply and say, 'Hey, there's a facade grant, oh, like, do it now, don't wait to June and say, 'Hey, you have a month to get me all this information,' like, we gotta put it out there now for the businesses."
I understand, just want to bring up for discussion to talk about.
Okay, but I'm saying, we, we do a lot of talking, but there's not a lot of action, so I'm saying.
There is a lot of action.
So, how come, how come we haven't gotten any in two years then?
I, we have, how come we've gotten $15 million with everything else?
Okay, anyhow.
Well, hold on, no, no, hold on Jim, I'm just asking Mr. Backer, because I'm saying, have we gotten any facade grants for our businesses downtown, yes or no?
We have not done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But we, but we seem that we get a lot of street grants, but not a lot of business grants, which are a fact, that's not an opinion, that's a fact.
But here's another fact.
Yes, Mr. Roche, what's the other fact?
Fact is years ago, we got some facade money, guess what happened?
What happened?
Well, when the businesses found out, A, they had to patch, okay?
Okay.
And the second thing is, because government money, you had to be raped, raped, well, they didn't want to take, participate.
And that's their choice, but we don't even have the information for them to give them that this time, do we, yes or no?
We did try, we did try facade grading in the past, the problem was, there is criteria, just like I talked about creating our own, we can create our destiny, the, um, prevailing wage was an issue because some of the projects were $45,000.
Yes, no?
A lot of individuals wanted roofs done, you can't do roofs, we tried that, and it has to be, uh, street facing, so there's other people that wanted street facing, or non-street facing work done that didn't fall flat. We also can't do sidewalks, which in other cases, so the problems of the state grant would not be in place if we decided to create our own.
I, I'm not saying about our own, I'm saying about the state one, that we don't get any information, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have gotten information out to our businesses in our business district or wherever, let me know, I'm just saying, in my time here, to my knowledge, we always wait till the last minute to do it, and then people are struggling, like, "I gotta get this stuff done here in two weeks, it's impossible to get a contractor here to get these numbers."
So, with our new policy and our new procedure in place and having work sessions, so they come out, this is something that we're gonna make a statement out, or you're not in the newspaper, tell people, "Hey, look, the grants are coming out, whatever you discussed with us at the work session, and maybe you want to show up, so you have an idea of what the rules are and what it is for." Part of our problem sometimes is, is that we don't communicate the rules or, or people don't understand what the rules are.
Correct, yes.
Sometimes it's not our communication, it's their interpretation, so maybe that's the way we go instead of sitting here debating over whether to get them or we don't get them.
Well, I'm, this is about, as you said, getting the information out, I don't think we have done that very well.
I don't think we've done that very well in any way.
Not just the grant.
So, it's not just, it's not just the grants, but it's a lot of other things.
Yes.
And, but, uh, for the work sessions, I think that's a good start. So, you know, when Barrett gets that information, he can put that out there, and then move forward with, uh, before your people have to come to it, and then we can debate and, you know, devote half thousand, twenty five hundred, really, to one decision, and so that the people know, you know, I'm sure Barrett will be very happy to help people, uh, get their grants and do some things.
Continue on, Mr. Backer.
Okay, so, P8 sites, um, that's a grant that actually helps previously utilized sites or underutilized sites, so any infrastructure that would be going up to that site, so that's something that we should do that in the future for, in my opinion, Susskran Avenue. Um, Pennsylvania First, um, that grant is helpful for businesses and corporations, municipalities, um, really it's job, job training, um, acquisition of land, construction, re, rehabilitation of buildings, um, so there's working capital that can be given with that, so that will actually help us, um, for a business potentially, if they want to purchase a property and, uh, redevelop it and demolish it from the foundation. Um, that is... I'll have to get that number for you. But, I'll, I'll get it actually on John Allen, he's behind me.
Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, Main Street Matters Grant, um, so that is something that Jody talked about. Um, you would receive that and have a Main Street designation, we could work with a full-time downtown manager, excuse me, have a full-time downtown manager with that, um, and, uh, just like she said, she, most likely is gonna be looking for the city to contribute a part of that funding, they might not come at all. Yes, you would have, you would designate, you would be designated as a, um, Main Street, and at that point, you open yourself up to potential more funding and stuff. Went to a TPL Economic Conference, and, uh, one of the big things that they talked about was actually site readiness or site preparation, um, includes infrastructure leading up to the, uh, site itself, um, so I just wanted to point that out that, um, we are, you know, moving in the right direction as far as the city goes, um, in our attempts to, specifically the self-tech site, have that prepped, um, and, and ready for investment, uh, in some form of a business coming in to reuse or redevelop that subject. Um, economic initiatives, so I've had some, uh, conversations with developers and, uh, potential business owners to reuse and rehab some business, or excuse me, buildings in the city, um, for redevelopment in various capacities, so, um, I'm working with those developers and, uh, business owners, um, to have meetings with the governor action team as well as the state and congressional, or excuse me, congressional, um, elected officials, uh, just to see if there's anything they can do on their side, I've already had some linear conversations with all of them, so, I'll have some more of those meetings coming up soon. Economic, uh, certified economic development professional training, uh, wanted to bring that up to everybody because I, I want to look into getting that certificate potentially, have some more information on, in the, uh, in the coming weeks, that's something that would be promoted, um, but I wanted to see if there is any interest in, in council, uh, willingness, uh, to look at having myself, um, get some training in that site.
What's the cost of the training?
Uh, well, that training specifically, which I want to find some grant funding for, is around site training.
What's your like with?
Uh, it is, there's classes pertaining to it, so I'm not sure how long the classes are, but I think some people that I talked to took, uh,
One of the classes, are they evening classes or day classes?
They're online, so they're, they're, and some of them are at, you work, work, uh, at your own.
Any questions for Mr. Backer? Alright, uh, moving on, Councilman Barnhart?
I'm going to amend an ordinance, but I'm not gonna make a motion to do it, I'll read it for everybody.
For discussion.
For discussion, so I'll read it now. Uh, no person or organization excluding licensed motor vehicle dealers shall park or permit another person to park or stand any unlicensed or unexpected wreck, scrap, ruined, dismantled, non-repairable salvage or abandoned motor vehicles or automobiles, truck, hampers, trailers or parts thereof in the open or private property of the city of Sunbury, except as provided in this chapter. For the purposes of this section, it is prohibited for any person or organization other than licensed motor vehicle dealers to use tarp's, car covers, tape or similar means or any non-permanent or open structures such as an open carport tent or similar structure as a way of certain vending purposes here of. A permitted structure in compliance with the ordinance is meant to include four structurally secure walls, a roof and a door. Uh, I'm also wanting to add in there, if you have something, code, and this is our biggest complaint we get on the street, is "What are you doing about this car, what are you doing about that car?" So, we want to try to get these off the streets, so, you have a car and we have, a, a code officer goes by and takes a picture and he knows it's illegal or inoperable, he should be able to get a administrative search warrant, am I correct, if, if I'm wrong?
It was probable cause, yeah.
It was probable, well, they have a picture of it, so they got probable cause, they can remove that. But I'm also having there that if, I don't know how, how we can do it, I gotta talk to some other ideas I have to see if it's legal that we do it, but, these cars, I'm sure you've all seen them on the streets, they're just sitting there with four flat tires, they're not inspected, there's no registration on them, or, or back in an alley and, and out in the open, it's just, it's just an ice horn, so, we want them removed.
Councilman Barnhart, other question, if we, so it says licensed motor vehicle.
I'm already hearing.
Sorry, so it says license, you said licensed motor vehicle, what, my thought is, what about like a scrapyard or something?
Well, if you have more than three cars parked in here, it's considered a junkyard, that's illegal.
Yeah, they have to be designated, have, if like, for them to come off scrap or junk, they have to be designated to be that. If they are not considered that, then they fall under this ordinance. So, a lot of stuff that the code office is finding that, for example, I'm just saying, for example, someone, you have an uninspected vehicle, an uninspected, unregistered vehicle.
On the street, yeah.
In your life, and, you know, all right, hey, this, you're breaking the ordinance, we'll come back and say, "Hey, you gotta get this fixed." What we, what we're finding out, people are destroying the tarp over it, "Oh, I fixed it, I got a site," but like, but we know the problem's still there and it's an issue because that's what a lot of people are doing, like, we're not trying to hurt anybody, but we're trying to clean up the city, and like, you just cut, and it's not just vehicles, it's like, I have a pile of debris there from, it's been sitting there for a year, and that's against the ordinance, so people say, "Alright, I'll just cover it," but we all know, but it's still there.
As soon as they cover it, our hands are tied.
Yeah, so we're trying to help clean up these neighborhoods where there, where these issues are alive. And, like I said, we're, we're gonna work, like Councilman Barnhart said, I know his department, like, they're trying to work with the people, giving them time to do it, but a lot of time, people just say, you know, "It's because you cover your eyes, the problem's still there," and that's what, and that's what we're trying to do, so we're trying to help slowly diminish this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Question, that for discussion too?
Question, if I buy a classic car and put it in my carport to work on it for my grandson, I can't do that now, is what I'm saying.
Is it legal?
Is, as long as it's legal, like, if it has like the classic plates and every?
I didn't get that far, just bought it yesterday, put it in my carport, and this coming week I'm gonna start working on it, I can't do that, is that what?
No, with that, because you're showing, no, because you're showing, "Hey, this is my plan to do it," if you're coming with a plan.
You didn't say that.
Well, that's why I'm discussing, that's why we're still working.
Yeah, it's just like, it's just like a progress.
Because we said that, if somebody, uh...
Whoever.
Mom and I were talking about it, and we said that exact same thing, if somebody has a car there and they say, "Hey, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm gonna get it running," you go, "Okay, how long you think it'll take?" "Oh, it's probably gonna take two months to light, you have an antique car, it's gonna take me at least three months to get all the parts I need." Well, that's, alright, three, you're, you're telling us you're working on it, there's some people that...
They tell you that.
They go on with blinders, I don't see nothing, no, no, no.
Yeah, it's just like, anything with the code office, if there's like, cut the, like, you know, of high grass, okay, hey, you gotta get this cut within X number of days, same concept.
And there's cars that, Jim, they have four flat tires, no inspection, no registration, it's, 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 it's there for months. You gotta move that, okay, it's there for months, what are you supposed to do, just let it in the street? You can't let it there.
First of all, it's street something else, private property, you're not gonna do that.
He said what the, like, that goes back to, if we're gonna have that, like I said, if you come with a plan, say your classic car, like, hey, "I'm gonna get this thing fixed here," okay, you're fine, but if it's just gonna be more flat tire, a lot of people just throw the tarp over and say, "Alright, the problem's gone," but we all know the problem's still there.
If I had the money like you and I, Corvette, and I would want to cover it, I can cover it. And, 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 there ain't nothing anybody can do about that, but if it's not inspected or registered, then, then we would see it, and then you try to cover over it.
But if it's my private property?
It goes back to like, like, for example, Spain, we'll say, in a back, we'll say your back carport, I'm just as an example. They drive by, they see it's not inspected, or just a pile of junk or whatever it may be, they see the problem, so like, hey, we're saying, "Hey, you need to fix this issue," and they think you say, "Alright, I have, my plan is to get rid of this in a month" or to fix the car in three months, that's fine, but a lot of people are just, "Okay, there's a problem, I'll throw the blue tarp over."
If you're in your backyard, you can't see it from the street, we, nothing anybody can do about it.
Yeah.
But if I can see it from the street?
It goes back to, it's one of those things, if it's, as long as it's in the ordinance and they can see it.
You don't have a problem with us trying to clean up the streets and get the cars off of here?
But are you gonna have to build it under every car cover?
You can't.
No, but it's, it's, it's going back to, for example, say, so, we know it's a problem, we said, "Hey, you need to fix this," then they throw the tarp over it, now we can't do anything, we're saying, once it's been...
Once it's already been recognized as being an issue, it can't be covered.
Correct.
The first probable cause, you can get an administrator, it's once.
Correct, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to fix, that's the, that's the issue that they're seeing, like, hey, you have this pile of scrap, I mean, I mean, a po, I mean, a pile of scrap, that's a safety issue.
You don't, you don't, you don't respect on anybody's rights, but at the same time, you want to clean the street up. Either you, either you want to do it or you don't want to do it, if you, if you go up, they're covered up, and you still have the problem.
But how are you gonna?
You gotta fix the problem.
How are you gonna fix it if it's covered and you don't know what's going on?
At that point, if it's already covered, we can't do anything about it, but we're trying to, the ones that we do see, address those issues. Yes, and are we gonna get everything, no, but it's a step in the right direction, if people are gonna know. Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we have a whole different value, we have a couple of cables that cover their vehicles at this time of year.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's fine.
And it was not inspected and you're still driving it, and try this, because like, there's a lot of your rider, huh?
Yeah, and I, and we can, and you, and everybody sees, there's a bunch of inoperable vehicles in yards that are on cinder block, and that's, and that's the stuff we're trying to fix.
But you wouldn't have the right ordinance to review?
The, the original? The, the original?
The, well, with your...
The amended one, uh, as soon as I have the...
Once he gets it, oh, by, oh, he said he'll send it out.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Nothing, all right, any other top, issues on that topic? All right, so then, I mean, Mr. Backer kinda already covered this here, our 20, 25 grants, and kind of Spang said about, you know, when it comes to facade grants, or sidewalk grants, or the white grant, like Schmokene just got, getting that information out there to the public ahead of time, so they can prepare, rather than, you know, like, hey, fussing around and saying, and we miss it, so it's just like, see if you get that information out to the public.
So here's, here's next one.
I can't think of their name.
Here, just what a role this is, it came from, so there's an idea of when these grants are coming out, so, I mean, just kind of, the proximity, spring, proximity, February, proximity, June, so we have an idea, we're just putting the date of this out, proximity, yeah, but it'll be something...
I think under two, uh, under the agenda, maybe under announcements, you know, we can just say, hey, this grant's open.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, actually, should say more work like that.
Yeah, be more proactive. All right, anyone else for discussion topics? All right, on to announcements, there's, we're still accepting letters for the following positions, civil service board, three-year term, housing authority, a five-year term, redevelopment authority, a five-year term, zoning hearing board, two positions for a three, for a three-year term, planning commission, three positions for a four-year term, municipal authority, two positions for a five-year term, HARB, there's only one position for a four-year term, being a registered architect, uh, recreational board, four-year term, board of appeals, four-year term, uh, shade tree commission, three-year term, ugly sweater contest, party at the ice skating rink on December 29th at 4:00 PM, New Year's Eve celebration at the ice skating rink, starting at 12, and going to 3, in Cameron Park, starting at 8, and going to the after midnight, the next council meeting will be here on December 23rd at 15, and at this time, is there any public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Alan, uh, your, um, P8 sites, right, what sites are you talking about? Are you talking about historic sites, are you talking about sites that, written on Department of Revenue, Commonwealth, Commonwealth of Angels, and uses?
So it's sites that are, were already developed for, um, for industry that are underutilized in its current form, or sites that have never been developed and can be developed, so it's more of a commercial industrial side of thing, not so much the residential.
Would that be, include the Westinghouse property, or Saltech, as you know?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Bob?
Okay, this, uh, parking of, uh, inoperable vehicles, how does that affect, if somebody has a for sale sign on it, it might be in, inoperable condition, but they have a for sale phone sign on it, trying to get rid of it?
That goes back to what we said here, we need to have a, not we, but the individual, all right, has to have a plan for it, like, for example, hey, I'm trying to sell this vehicle here in the next, I'm just making there six months, okay, that's acceptable, hey, I'm trying to sell this vehicle in the next 10 years, obviously, that's not acceptable. So it goes back to, as long as they're coming up with a plan to get rid of the inoperable vehicle, or, like I said, it's not just inoperable vehicles, it's also scrap, or junk, whatever it may be, they have, either they can, either they get rid of it, or it has to be some type of a plan within reasonable timeframe to get rid of the debris, or inoperable vehicle, or inoperable, whatever it may be.
Not through the BNA, you're buying...
Ordinance, that is correct, yes.
That proves jazzy's...
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Right, so, uh, just wanna ask Mr. Raish, do we have an update on Sesquane Avenue? I don't know if he'll be open.
Most likely Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
It was supposed to finish, but of course it rained, so they're gonna push the line scrapping on Packard to next spring, and, uh, Sesquane, as you know, is ready to go, so, getting a little bit of work to do, there in the corner of the intersection of Packard and Sesquane, maybe do that tomorrow, when it's not raining, clean that area up, and I know there'll be Sesquane tomorrow morning.
Okay, so I know a lot of people are already parking on the street, I didn't know if we were allowed to?
Well, the contract, we didn't wanna give that commitment in case something would happen, because of my building, but we know they're really gonna park there, so, we're getting open as soon as possible, I think, Wednesday, for sure, as of Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Jim Brumal, I live at the corner of, uh, North Ninth Street and Mossers, uh, Ms. Martina, uh, is the location, I believe, it is a extension of Mossers Street that runs into Mike Rock, I mean, it's, now, we did place railroad ties because we had a motorcycle almost threw it down the back of the rear, not knowing that it's dead end, no one. I would like to purchase that driveway, I consider it a driveway, but it is a part of Mossers Street, okay, it would increase my tax revenue, but not by that much, I'm willing to make an offer on that piece of ground, yep, this is the one now, over here, I called Ms. Martinez several times.
We have talked about, though, we talked about doing it as a whole, not your property, but renaming streets, selling streets, and doing different things, and it's not a project that I've reached, Jim, but, yeah, it is at the top of Steve's list, he actually called me the other day about it, because he said he was just up there on Friday.
I'm sorry.
She said it's, they've been meaning to do that along with other city streets to get them sold or renamed, but it hasn't gotten completed yet, and she said Steve was up there on Friday to look at it.
Well, he was up there to do something else on Friday, he said he was up by your house, so that's what he brought it up again, to me.
Yeah, yeah, he was up there because it's single, it's in here, now, 14 or 15 years we maintain it, okay, you are spowing, filling these holes up that appear every year, and I'm not talking about little, I'm talking about holes, because water runs down all the walls.
Right off any reference.
It's either a A or a N on the property, if not, you don't wanna sell it, I mean, my daughter should make her paperwork, and I'm willing to, uh, make an offer underground, but if not, then I would like the city to maintain it, also mow the grass, if my wife has mowed for 15 years.
Yeah, I just asked, if, we didn't move on that earlier, because we wanted to do everything as a whole, you didn't say going to the closet, you sure we started seeing your properties without having them ready to go?
No, but I don't know that we can do what he's asking. Mr. Bob, I wanna talk loud so you can hear me, sir, I'm not yelling at you, I can't... Right, no problem, uh, I don't know that we can offer you a property, or take an offer from you for a property without offering it to the general public, but, that doesn't mean that the city cannot look into negating that street, and it just becoming a part of your property, okay, so that you wouldn't buy it, it would just become part of your property, I think that's a more legal option, probably, than offering it to, so, I thought you might like it, um, so, let me look into that for you, okay, there's a way we can, it's called, uh, there's a need for, uh, constructing the road or something they call it, but there's a process for it, I'll look into it for you, because it doesn't, it seems to me that that might be a liability waiting to happen anyway, so we should probably take care of it.
Does anybody else, sir, use that, anybody could access to really, I don't know, but I would never cut anybody off, if they wanted to.
I think it's just, Steve and I, they don't want to develop them, so it is something that could, if we, how I could go about doing it, yeah.
But if that feeds anybody else's career...
Right, right, it does, that would change, and, but Jim, we've done this without, you know, so, I mean, it's the same kind of thing, that's why I'm, at least, I turned it my head, I mean.
Sitting there, and then he's checking into it.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, now, on the inside, now, it's dirt, it's not a cow, but it's, you know, like, the home, it's, 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 along in this side as well, they take, along on the other side as well, they take, so, my wife has been mowing, that it, for years, it's, we can take ownership one way or another, then I just ask the city, like, please...
Our property, we should...
I'll send, I'll have, I'm gonna have Steve or someone, I'll take some pictures and get a note from you.
So I can see it in my head, or else I'll drive by, all right, thank you.
And any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, I'll go to the screen.